Meeting and then we'll, we're towards the end, so we'll take care of it. Then if not, I'll put you on the laptop and the audio will come out of the laptop and you can hear any questions from the board over the mics.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would stand to recite the pledge with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Zerring.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Charles.
Mayor Bowman.
I am honored to be able to recognize an employee this evening. If I could have J.C. Johnson come and join me up here. Good evening. How are you? Good to see you. So we have an honor for you that you've been with us now for the city for 10 years. I think a couple of your supervisors may be here. Okay, Rodney, come on up. What would you like to say about this young man?
J.C. comes from us, to us, from the electric department, brush crew. And he's done a great job for them. He's done a great job for us. We have a lot of hope for him. And we were gonna make sure he gets that, whatever he needs to make it work here.
What would you like to say about Rodney?
He's a good supervisor so far and he's taking care of me pretty well. I have no complaints.
Well, I really caught what he said about you and he said, "We have a lot of hope for you." And that means he's willing to invest time and energy in you, so you have a good boss. But thank you for being with the city for 10 years. Thank you for being with the electric department, doing such a great job of trimming trees, and now being with Rodney in the street department. Congratulations. All right. Well, thank you, Board. Thank you, J.C. and Rodney. If I could ask the Board members this evening to please speak directly into your microphones. You know, we are recording live and we want our audience that are joining us livestreamed to be able to hear. So you're welcome to take your masks off when you're speaking, but please remember to speak directly into the microphone. Okay. Just pause here for a moment. Alderman Reese had to step out. Mr. Radliff, did we have any agenda request forms presented by the public?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the minutes. First of all, are the minutes from the regular meeting April 5th, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Davidson. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. And then moving on to the minutes of the Board of Aldermen work session, April 5th.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor of the approval of those minutes?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. Moving on to the executive session minutes, I would just mention to the Board, we're catching up tonight. You know, we've had so many meetings by Zoom and we can't approve executive session minutes when we're not attending in person. So we're kind of playing catch-up here, getting the approval of some executive session minutes. And I would also mention for the record that Alderman Franklin and Alderman Mills will not be voting on the executive session minutes from November 2nd or December 7th, as they were not with us at that time. So I would, you all have had the minutes. I believe you've all had the opportunity to read them. So I would entertain a motion for the approval of the November 2nd executive session minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor of approving the November 2nd, 2020 minutes of the executive session?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. The executive session minutes from December 7th.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion for Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Miller, I'm sorry, Milner. All in favor of the approval of December 7th, 2020 executive session minutes?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. And now the executive session minutes from February 1st, 2021.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Reese with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes from February 1st, 2021 stand approved as printed. And finally, the executive session minutes, February 16th, 2021. I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Zerring. All in favor of the approval of the February 16th, 2021 executive session minutes?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. Moving on to the agenda items. Chief Hofer, the Stacey Cox Memorial 5K Walk Event Permit.
Yes, good evening. Before you tonight is the Stacey Cox Memorial Scholarship 5K Run. The request date of May 8, 2021, start at 8:00 a.m., usually done well before 10:00. This run starts at the high school, runs down through City Park, and then back to the high school. We've had no problems with this run in the past. I think this is the eighth year. I said the ninth, but I think it's the eighth year because they didn't do it last year because COVID. This is for a scholarship for a high school senior. No problems in the past, like I said, and staff recommends approval. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief? I think most of us have been on the board long enough that we realize this event permit comes before us each year. And as the chief said, there have been no problems with it, so.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor of the approval of a Stacey Cox Memorial 5K Walk Event Permit?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That event permit stands approved. Moving on then, Council Bill 26.
Council Bill 026 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisville, Missouri, approving the appointment of Brian Wooton to the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals.
So I don't believe that Mr. Wooton is with us this evening, but he has been serving on the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals. And Mr. Arthur mentioned that Mr. Wooton was interested in being reappointed. So I bring that appointment before you of Brian Wooton reappointment to the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Davidson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 26 becomes Resolution 017. Council Bill 27.
Council Bill 027 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen and the City of Harrisville, Missouri, approving the appointment of Vince Farr as an alternative member of the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals.
And again, this is an appointment that I bring to the Board tonight. Mr. Farr has served in the capacity of an alternate to the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals. And Mr. Arthur has mentioned that Mr. Farr would be interested in being reappointed to that board. So I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Franklin. A roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 27 becomes Resolution 018. The Quarterly Financial Update. Mr. Hart, good evening.
Good evening. I believe I've got something to put up on the board. But while he's doing that, Ben Hart from Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. As we talked about last year, I'd come back to you guys on a quarterly basis to kind of overview the 150 pages that are in your packet. There will be a test on page 87. I don't know what it is, but. So what I want to do, I do want to remind you that these are just first quarter results. In government, obviously, things are not like they are in businesses. They're routine sales on a monthly basis expected to come in. We'll have bulk revenue come in periodically through the year. Property tax is one of them that's distributed throughout the year several times. Sales tax is really the only one that's really consistent, if you will, that throughout the year. Timing of the receipts, property tax, unexpected costs, like the electric fund, is one of them that we, that we take a look at, obviously. One quarter does not make a trend, especially January, February, March. Does not make a trend, although there are hopeful numbers within this, within your packet. And I know my presentation's on page 182 of your packet as well, the packet, page 182. One of the things we look at just on a quarterly basis is our cash needs being met. So how are revenues coming in and expenses going out? That's probably the key factor, key factor within the quarterlies, anyway. Do you have that?
I'm getting there.
You're getting there. Gotcha, gotcha. While he's pulling that up, I'll just jump in. There's, on the, on the revenues, what we looked at last, at the end of the year-end results, a lot of these graphs are going to be the same way. I took a look at the quarter, the first quarter revenues as they are compared to the first quarter of last year, just as a comparison to see how we, how we compared. Overall, revenues were up with the exception of the emergency services fund. Ambulance fees and transports are down, obviously, will be down throughout, probably throughout the year because of the pandemic and a number of other things. But right now, that's the only one that's got the revenues that are down compared to last year. General fund overall is up by 10%. 13% increase in sales tax, that's January, February, and March, is a 13%. And again, this is the one, caveat, one quarter does not make a trend. It can be 20% one month and back down to negative 2% the next. But that is a positive trend, and I'll touch on that after a little bit. Electric is up by 25%. Obviously, we were hit with a pretty brutal February compared to 20, there we go, second page, Jeremy. Yeah, there we go. We were hit with a pretty brutal 2021 in February versus 2020, which the average temperature was way up above 3 degrees, like it was this February. And these are the graphs that I was talking about. These are just citywide revenues, again, the light green versus the dark green. Light green being 2020, the first quarter, and dark green being this quarter for 2021. So overall, these are pretty good numbers. Now, you'll see virtually nothing in aquatic center and the bond and interest that's typical this time of year. But the rest of them, with the exception of community center, are up. Community center is dead even. Again, I see, I expect that one to take off in the next few months as well. So this is the revenues, and I love my chart title. It's original. I forgot to delete that off of their chart title. Just like I had displayed at the end of the year, charges for services are going to be the overwhelming majority of revenues when you look at it citywide. And charges for services are anything that patron pays for, whether it's utilities, it may be parks, it may be fees for any kind of reports coming through the city administration. So that's everything else. If you look at this, no, that's right, good timing. So what we did is, again, broke down the charges by service, the charges for services and what they were made up of. Obviously, half of it's the electric fund. Utilities, the CWSS, the water sewer system is the 25%, that's 75% of overall charges for services. So this, this actually gives you an idea, overall idea, what that, what that looks like. Go ahead and flip to the next one. So quarter one expenses, or quarter one revenues look pretty good. How does quarter one expenses look? With the exception of electric, everything's down. And you guys already are well aware of what electric expenses have done. So overall, they look good as well. Compared to last year, they're down from that, that quarter. Again, January, February, and March of 2020 was a relatively normal time period. Pandemic hadn't hit yet. We didn't have any anomalies within sales tax. Sales tax even in April will be somewhat normal because it's for a couple of months prior to that. So when we enter April, May, and June, we'll really see what some of those, what some of the revenues and expenses might look like. Go ahead and flip to the next one. So as the $8.3 million in citywide expenses go, where do they go? Obviously, being a service-driven industry, we've got both personal services and contractual being the majority. Well, commodities, contractual and personnel services, $2 million of it goes into people. People and making sure that they've got what they need through the commodities. Capital outlays a little bit down. Obviously, the first quarter, we're not going to be building much. Grant's getting ready to build a whole bunch, especially compared, compared to what you guys have done in the past. And again, off to the right side, I've been able to plug in what those, what those names really mean, what's in each one of those categories. And I'll continue to be, try to be consistent with this going through forward with the rest of the quarters. Go ahead, Jeremy. So with the expenses looking good, how do they compare to the budget? We, obviously, we budget on an annual basis, so when you take a look at this, it's really 25% of the budget's what we should have spent. On the general fund, we're at 19%, less, obviously, less than that benchmark. Electric, we're only 31%, so we've still got time to catch up with some of those expenses through the rest of the year. And water sewers, way down from what they were. Now, obviously, the water and sewer and electric services may have capital that they'll be catching up with this summer. Community center's down. It'll pick up, obviously, as we move forward through the year. Hit the next slide. So the dashboard is in your packet completely. This is, this is just an excerpt of it, just to get, give you an idea what sales tax, just a reminder what sales tax looks like. On the left is the first few years as it compares to, on the right, which is a few months. So the dark green is last year, every month last year on sales tax on the top. And then there's a light green, you can barely see it, that is shooting up like a rocket from January, February, and March. Overall, that increase, increase, there's an increase every month. If I was to set a trend line on that dark green, it's going to be a very gradual slope up, which is unusual for a pandemic. And if you remember, there's your top 10, and I'll touch on them here, in here, but your top 10 taxpayers had a really good year only because of the circumstances presented to them. People stayed home. They needed medicine. They needed food. They needed something to do. So those three stores are usually the ones that got, had the most business throughout, probably the metro is what I would say, any clients that I've got. Public safety is the same way. Sales tax is up from that one. If you hit the next slide, this is the one I'm talking about. There's another one. Of course you didn't. Well, within your packet, there's a, what I did this time was something new. Taken the top 10 sales tax producers by month and compared it from, and compared it from 19, 20, and 21. And I found February to be interesting in, in this year, only because it's gone up considerably. Well, there you go, back one, one slide, yeah. Maybe, maybe, maybe not. Well, we can stay with this one. We'll stay with this one. There we go. Now you got to the slide. So February, the gray bar on the right-hand side, there's, these are, each set are in months, January through December, obviously. The darker blue is 19, the light blue is 20, and the gray is 21. This is a good indication, and I get this from Finance SIF, this is a good indication of where the next month might look like, only because this is 75, well, probably anywhere from 60 to 75% of revenues come through those top 10 taxpayers. And then obviously, we can drop down to see by type of taxpayer, we can see what that revenue looks like. But this, this is just a comparison from those three years, for those three months. And those are individual collections for each one of those months. The next slide will show a cumulative of those three. And again, that gray bar is on top, and that's 2021. And it's well above both 19 and 20. And that's, I think that's all I've got on the financial piece. I do want to touch on the American Rescue Plan, the ARP, a little bit. And Brad asked me to bring that up. I know our firm's doing a lot of work tracking all the dollars that are coming through that. And what I've got in front of you or for your information is, is really a lot of the information that we've been giving out as to what's in that plan. I know myself, I'm tracking what's coming to the city of Harrisonville. And what I'd like to do is just kind of thumb through some of those if, if I could, Jeremy. Out of the $350 billion, it's broken down into really nine different pots. But there, obviously, there's one pot that you guys would be interested in, and that's the local, state and local government share of it. Let's go to the next slide. There we go. Eligible uses. So we know there's a, there's a certain number coming to you guys, eligible uses in this case. It's going to be, really represent what CARES was when we received money in 2020, only it's going one step further. Obviously, we're still responding to a public health emergency, just like last year, and responding to workers performing essential work. But this case, it's recovering revenue losses. And, and some entities kind of struggle with that because they've seen increases in revenue in certain places. But if you take, for instance, court fines, nobody was driving for a few months. So your court fines were down. Well, that could be counted as a revenue, as a revenue loss, because you count on that to, to be able to pay for your court system, your municipal court system. A number of those different things we'll be looking at as we move through the next couple of months and figuring out what, what pieces those revenues may need to be recovered. And that's every fund. If there were revenue losses over in emergency services, that can count toward that. And there's also investments with sewer, water, and broadband. Water, sewer, this is just a direct injection. So through the capital process, we bring these resources back to you, say, okay, how do we want to plan through using these? 1.8 million, I believe, half of that's going to be this year, the next half next year. Maybe you want to plug them into projects. They don't have to be COVID-related. They don't have to pandemic-related. On water and sewer, you can plug them directly into those projects. And they can also be transferred to nonprofits or other, other units of government. If you wanted to give it back to the state, I don't know why, but you give it back to the state, that's eligible. Or even other local governments. They can't be spent on pensions. We don't have a problem with that in Missouri. Timing, I just mentioned, it should be coming up in May, is that check coming through. And then the second tranche will be no earlier than 12 months after the first payment comes in. And then the spending deadline is different this year, or this time around than it was last time. Last time, you had to spend it by the end of last year, by December 31st. This gives you two years to do it, really three, on December 31st, 2024, it has to be spent. And there's a whole process that, that we're going through to actually evaluate who's getting what and when it comes. And there's a different, there's a couple of different buckets. I guess the number one thing to say is it comes directly to you guys. States, counties cannot put additional, additional rules on top of what you're going to get. It may come from the county. Actually, it comes from the state directly to you guys. And really, it's going to be the federal government that lays any kind of regulations on, above and beyond what we just mentioned. There's obviously, there's obvious guidelines that still need to be laid out on how to spend it and what can be spent, how it's reported back. We've talked to our audit group within our own firm, and they're, I don't know how we're going to audit this because there's no regulations on it whatsoever. So obviously, one thing we learned in CARES is we track everything we spend it on and how we do it. As we go through this budget process, obviously, we're going to be talking to you guys. And as we, as we make those decisions, we'll document that and put a note to the file to say, here's what the decision was and here's where we're going to put it. So we'll document it all the way through, so if somebody's asking where it's going to be spent, we'll have it right there. These are the nine buckets that, that money's going into. There are a few, there are a couple of grants that are out there for the special venue and operating operators. These are theater operators and any special venues, entertainment venues. There's a reimbursement, revenue loss reimbursement that they can apply for, along with restaurants. Restaurants, there's a grant out there for that specific purpose, too, is any kind of revenue loss. That's part of this, that's part of this bill as well. Go ahead. Yeah, I touched on, I touched on this, and this is just comparing what we received in CARES to what's coming in the ARP. And it, again, goes back through what we already know. As of Friday night, and I turned this in, I think Thursday, as of Friday night, there are already, there's regulations coming out, some preparatory work that needs to be done, and we're already through most of it. A DUNES number needs to be filed for. You guys have a DUNES number, Dun and Bradstreet number. And then from federal grant perspective, there's what's called SAM.gov that you have to register for. Once you have a DUNES number, you register for this SAM's number. Both of these numbers, the federal government can then track who gets what and how much was sent, which is not a bad, bad idea when you get that, that many billions of dollars going out. You're going to want to track it. And then the third thing is payment information. Once we've got all that together, eventually, they're going to ask for that. We'll give it to them, and then here comes, we'll be able to receive the money that's expected. And once it's received, obviously, Finance SIF will be investing it as we, as we can, given the current market, until decisions are made on what we can do with that. And since we've got till 2024, the thought process is to go through the budget process. You've already got a budget process. We're going to start that early. We're going to start with capital, obviously, as we talked about last year, start with capital first. And this will be a resource that you can plug into either, and again, it's a one-time resource. You plug it into capital or one-time expenses over in operating. But I think the, what we're recommending is, as you have the ability to use your current strategic planning processes to be able to make decisions on where this money goes. So I wanted to touch on those two topics, the quarterly report, but then also hit the ARP real quick. And we continue to have webinars and information coming out. I know I continually send them to Jeremy and Kim and Brad, so if you want anything, obviously, I can get it through Brad and get it to you guys as well. So Mayor, that's all I had for, for this quarter.
Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Hart? I think we're probably all pleased at that sales tax report.
Yeah, I am too.
Makes us real happy.
I am too. There's certain instances, we've got clients that are identical to Harrisonville, we've got certain retailers that have had the best year ever last year, and they're beating those numbers. So we'll see what happens.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Cheryl.
All right, we'll move on then to Council Bill 28.
Council Bill 28 is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an amended financial assistance agreement with the Missouri Historic Preservation Office and contractual agreements with Davis Preservation and Gould Evans LLC for the completion of an update of the Harrisville Historic Square Preservation Plan.
You may recall, yes, you may recall that we received a historic preservation grant originally for a project of $7,500, but we had trouble with COVID and obtaining consultants that were certified, which is a requirement to do the project. We've been staying in contact with the state Historic Preservation Office about our problem. They indicated other communities were having the same problems, and in fact, a number of communities were canceling their projects and weren't going to be accepting their grants. So they suggested to us that we apply for additional funds, try to negotiate with people to do the work, and we did that, and they indicated that they would approve a budget increase from a $7,500 project to a $20,000 project. There, they will be paying, the grant will be paying $12,000 of it. There is a 40% match requirement from the local government, so our share will be $8,000, which is an increase of $5,000 that we have to come up with. Where we are proposing to take this from is, the comprehensive plan came in under budget, came in about $15,000 under budget, so we're proposing to take the additional $5,000 to make our match. And what this resolution does is authorize the city administrator to sign these agreements.
Any questions for Mr. Crowe? Seeing no questions, let entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Zaring. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 28 becomes Resolution 019. Council Bill 29.
Council Bill 29 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to update sections of the city's municipal code addressing amendments to the adopted 2018 International Fire Code and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Arthur, welcome back.
Thank you, good evening. There's one thing, everything except one thing is basically what we talked about on the 5th. The only thing that's changed, Chief Myler and I got together to talk more about Alderman Davidson's recommendation to take a little closer look at the cost recovery charge for false alarms. On the 5th, we were looking at $100 for that cost recovery charge. What I've come down to, number one, the big thing to remember, this is a cost recovery charge, this is not a punitive fine. So I, I couldn't really look at a progressive fee, in other words. The progressive nature is going to be applicable if someone doesn't pay the cost recovery charge invoice, they'll be issued a municipal court citation and taken to court. And that's where Judge LaGrasso will have the ability to be punitive in nature. Eric and I talked a lot about the cost, and these kind of costs are never very easy to put together when you're talking about a department. But a couple things to think about. Every time they respond to a false alarm, there's over $2 million of equipment being driven there. On average, five members of his department respond to a false alarm at a place like Walmart. If you take Eric's budget for the year, 4.1 million, add a couple hundred thousand for depreciation of vehicles and other fixed assets, before you know it, we're close to $500 an hour for him to run his department on a 24/7, 365-day year. So we've come up with a $300 per occurrence cost recovery charge. Now, this is at Eric's discretion, and it's only applicable after three false alarms in a calendar year. So I hope you think, Gary, that we've kind of looked at what you were saying and gotten a little, a little more recovery-minded without being punitive. So that's all I had on this first one, International Fire Code.
So it's a maximum of $300 after the third false alarm?
It's $300 per occurrence.
Correct.
After the third, so for four and on.
Right.
We can bill $300 each time.
And so what about occurrence number one and number two?
Numbers one, two, and three are basically get out of jail free cards. Yeah. I think everybody could agree that there needs to be some portion of, you know, mistakes happen, things go wrong, equipment breaks. But just on the Walmart job alone, we, we finalized out at 14 false alarms before we were able to get the Walmart corporate people to do the right thing. So anybody who's undergoing more than three false alarms in a year has got problems that they need to address.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Davidson?
Either, if this were Chris or Eric, either one, is there, do you have statistics in the past? How many times have you had in excess of three false alarms from any business within
Without looking at it, there's no way I can really determine, or give you that answer at this point. Walmart seemed to be the one that generated this. We've had some issues with.
Speak in your microphone, please.
Dwight before, with some response issues with them, but they addressed the issue, but this has been some time back. So without getting the statistical numbers, repetition of calls, false alarms, et cetera, I can't give that to you at this time.
Seeing no questions, this is an ordinance.
I make a motion, we suspend the rules, move Council Bill 29 to second reading.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Davidson to suspend the rule on Council Bill 29 and advance it to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you, second reading.
Council 029 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to update sections of the city's municipal code addressing amendments to the adopted 2018 International Fire Code and establish an effective date. Second reading, Council 029.
And a roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Council Bill 29 is approved and becomes Ordinance 3537. Council Bill 30.
Council 030 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to update sections of the city's municipal code addressing wind speed and building sewer minimum size and establishing an effective date. First reading, Council 030.
Mr. Arthur?
No, no changes on this one from what we talked about on the 5th.
I'd make a motion, Madam Mayor, to move Council Bill, or to suspend the rule and move Council Bill Number 2021, Dassey Road, to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion for Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to suspend the rule on Council Bill 30 and advance it to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Thank you, second reading.
Council 030 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to update sections of the city's municipal code addressing wind speed and building sewer minimum size and establishing effective date. Second reading, Council 030.
And a roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 30 is approved and becomes Ordinance Number 3538. Council Bill 31.
Council 031 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to update sections of the city's municipal code addressing interceptors and establishing an effective date. First reading, Council 031.
Mr. Arthur?
Once again, no changes from what we talked about before. This is all about helping out the sewer plant, basically.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Arthur?
Yeah, I do. On the interior interceptors, where you're asking for them to be cleaned out monthly in the clean-out agency, I know, historically, but can the proprietor clean out that box?
Yes, on the interior, yes.
Okay.
They're small enough that the proprietor can easily.
That was my opinion. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mills. Any other questions for Mr. Arthur? This is an ordinance.
Make a motion to suspend the rule and go to a second reading.
Second. Have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Reese to suspend the rule on Council Bill 31 and advance it to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Thank you, second reading.
Council 031 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, to update sections of the city's municipal code addressing interceptors and establishing an effective date. Second reading, Council 031.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 31 is approved and becomes Ordinance Number 3539. Council Bill 32.
Council Bill 32 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to update sections of the city's municipal code addressing corrections to development of municipal code language and establishing an effective date. First reading, Council 032.
Mr. Arthur?
No changes to what we had talked about on the 5th, making a few corrections.
Are those corrections of any significance that the board needs to know about?
I think probably to Carl and I are significant. I'm not sure how significant they might be to the board in general, but let me... Well, this is actually correcting something that, that has been a problem a couple times now. As far as our development code had a specific pipe wall thickness that was too light a pipe. And we, we were requiring an SDR 26. SDR is a, is a standard diameter ratio, so based on the size diameter of the pipe, it tells you how thick the wall needs to be. And we kept telling engineers that they needed to spec SDR 26, but yet, in our development code, we say it's okay to use SDR 35. And so that's one of the corrections that needed to be made. I don't, I don't know who or when put in the SDR 35, but that's pretty light pipe. And so with enough conflicts arising, it was time to change that and correct it. Another correction is to, in, in the past, people here have always wanted a four-inch minimum size building sewer, even on a house. Sewer pipes are designed to carry solids, so you don't want the liquid to run ahead of the solids. And when you oversize pipe, you're going against standard engineering practice. And believe it or not, it leads to more clogs than sizing the pipe correctly. So that's another thing that, that we'd like to, to go ahead and correct. Those were the two items on the correction list.
Thank you for that added explanation. Questions from the board of Mr. Arthur?
I got one or a comment.
Mr. Alderman Mills?
K and L there, conventional septic's not allowed. We used to, a resident within, if it wasn't within 400 feet, could put in a septic tank in lateral field. I guess K, does that cover that, too, where you're saying alternative sewage disposal systems, where they're, they can't hit the sewer system?
Actually, I'm glad you brought this one up because I'll be coming back. I've got a few problems with that. And I'm working on some other things. I'm working on some other things right now, but I'll be coming back. Number one, that 400-foot rule, in my opinion, is undue burden. You have to think about the size of the property. And that, that particular verbiage should read, if you're going to use 400 feet, it should be to the dwelling or to the business building and not the property line. Because you could take somebody who's home is located on the right-sized parcel and penalize them, and the person that builds closer to the property line kind of gets... You see what I mean? It, it should be to the actual building and not the property line. And I will have you entertain a proposal to change that this year. As far as not allowing laterals, per se, conventional soil absorption lateral systems, I'm not a fan of that either. And I, I've, I've said before, I'm a codes guy. In state statute, if you have three acres and your soil perks correctly, there is no reason why you shouldn't be able to put a soil absorption system in. If it doesn't perk, you do an engineered system. If you don't have three acres, you do an engineered system. We have them out on Twin Pines, north of the golf course, where there's no sewers yet. Honestly, I think some of these things, like what you've just brought up, Bill, it'd be nice if we got everybody to pay for extending sewer mains. And in a lot of cities, developers will do anything to get a building permit, and they'll run five miles of sewer. But we have to be realistic and not try to put the burden of sewer main extension every chance we get on a parcel or homeowner. We have to really look at what's fair and what isn't. And so in, in this particular case, the pipe size, that, that doesn't affect conventional, tied into sanitary, whatever. But I... But I will be bringing that other point back to you in the hopes of making that part of this ordinance a little fairer.
And then another comment, if you've not toured ADS in the industrial park, the pipe company out there, it's be interesting to get your thoughts on that after a tour. So back to your twenty six, SDR twenty six, I mean, the sewer pipes that they've developed with that corrugation, yet still a smooth liner, far exceeds twenty six. And I know we've, and the depth that that can be buried and not having the crushing or the, or the squishing of the pipe, the technology that's out there. And then the other thing that actually one of the, probably one of the highest paid jobs in Harrisonville is the, is to be able to weld plastic. It's not plastic, I guess, it's whatever, but to me, it's plastic. But the manholes that they're making out there and the, the larger size than a, than a standard concrete one and the, the ports and the, anyway, it's, it's amazing where all that's gone with, with plastics and, but anyway, it'd be interesting to see what you think on that because from an expense standpoint, it's a lot, it's cheaper. And, and, you know, them explaining a lot of cities, you know, still only allow clay pipe, sewer pipe, and eliminating all those joints and forty foot joints or, the technology is quite interesting. And get, get your take on all of that and, you know, they're making it here, maybe we could use it here.
I, I couldn't agree more with you. I, you know, they also do underground stormwater retention and detention.
A lot of, yeah, and they got some new stuff on that, yeah, and they're putting, you bury that under your parking lots, you don't have to have those ponds, it's wonderful.
Yeah. No, I couldn't agree more. I'm all for technology. And I, I think, and Carl would probably agree with me, we will, you know, you can't list everything in your municipal code. So one thing you have to do is you have to always be willing to accept a proposed alternative. And if engineer record comes and says, we'd like to use this, if it checks out, I'm all for it.
Great.
Thank you, I appreciate those comments about ADS. They are, they're a real treasure for us to have here in Harrisonville, that's for sure. Any other questions of Mr. Arthur on this council bill? It is an ordinance.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and move Council 32 to a second reading. Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to advance Council Bill thirty two to its second rea- to suspend the rule and advance Council Bill thirty two to its second reading. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Thank you, second reading, please.
Council 032 is in ordinance of the Board of Aldermen, the City of Harrisville, to update sections of the city's municipal code addressing corrections to development of municipal code language and establishing an effective date, second reading Council 032.
Enter roll call, please.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill thirty two is, the second reading?
Council, Council 032, I thought that was second reading.
Okay, my apologies, I hope, just tried it. Council Bill thirty two is approved and becomes ordinance thirty five forty. Council Bill thirty three.
Council Bill thirty three is in ordinance of the Board of Aldermen, the City of Harrisville, Missouri, establishing an enterprise trans- fund transfer policy for the City of Harrisville, Missouri and establishing effective date, second reading Council 033, first reading Council 033.
Mr. Smith, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Morgan. I'm gonna shoot from the hip here since my laptop's running the meeting. So this is a housekeeping item. This is ultimately a result of the two thousand and fifteen state audit and the resulting some of the findings where the auditors recommended that the City of Harrisonville go out and get proof that we were making the proper withdrawals from any enterprise funds and that those transfers could be documented and were appropriate. So that, we contracted with MGT, they went out, they created, went through the entire calculation, created a recommendation that was brought before the board, I believe in late two thousand and eighteen, again in two thousand and nineteen, but as it turns out, was not formally adopted as policy. However, knowing that that policy was there when Ben Hart came along to start working with us on the budget, that document was used as development of the budget. However, now that we're kind of at an impasse, the money is sitting there, ready to be used in the correct way, except the ordinance doesn't allow Kim to make the transfers in the appropriate way. So this is a housekeeping item. We need the transfer policy to be updated so that we can make those appropriate transfers to the various funds as needed. If you have any questions, Ben's here to answer them.
A number of the members of the board remember the MGT contract that we extended to be able to do this. I'm just, I guess, puzzled how it was never made part of policy.
So victim of timing. So a lot of change happened, there was a lot of change at the board level, there was a lot of change in staffing. And so at the time, when interim city administrator Mike Tholen was here, we were just trying to get the budget passed. We acted in good faith along with the policy, but the policy was never brought back to the board for approval and to be part of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Jeremy? Glad we're cleaning this up. This is an ordinance.
Make a motion to suspend and go to second reading.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Davidson to suspend the rule on Council Bill thirty three and advance it to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Thank you, second reading.
Council 033 is in ordinance of the Board of Aldermen, the City of Harrisville, Missouri, establishing an enterprise fund transfer policy for the City of Harrisville, Missouri and establishing an effective date, second reading Council 033.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill thirty three is approved and becomes ordinance number thirty five forty one. Council Bill thirty four.
Council 34 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen, the City of Harrisville, authorizing city administrator to recover additional energy costs incurred during the polar vortex event that occurred in February of two thousand and twenty one.
We may have had some technical difficulties getting Craig with Toth.
Wait.
Hope, there he is. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
You can hear me, Tess?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. There was just a slight delay, so I was double checking with you.
Okay, I'm gonna make the introduction here and then if you have any questions. So Craig is with Toth and Associates, they were.
Craig is with Toth.
We're getting some feedback. Craig, can you mute while I go ahead and talk?
Oh, yes, sir, sorry. I apologize.
No, it's all right. Okay, so Toth and Associates performed the original electric rate study from two years ago, and we brought them straight away into this problem because they were very familiar with our rate structure, they knew exactly what reports they needed, it was a very efficient way for us to get to the information that we needed. We took two different options to him or with, for him to calculate for us, which was the, it leaves out four options, but two different monetary contributions for the city. So two hundred and fifty thousand or five hundred thousand, those to be recovered either over terms of eight months or twelve months. He went through and, and made those calculations and we, you find those in your packet with what those would equal out to on a monthly basis. We have already worked out with the software vendor that we can put this as a separate line item on the bill. So this will be clear to citizens exactly what we're recovering and when it will end. If you have any questions for myself or for Craig, be happy to answer them.
Wait, I just.
Go ahead, Alderman Turner.
So I mean, I'm trying to look through the numbers to say, but so, it's hard to say an average, but I mean, average four family house, how much is this gonna?
It depends on the choices you make.
I'm sorry?
It depends on the choices you make. So, I mean, if we, if we go back and look at what our original calculation was, if we added an additional penny onto a person who maybe had a normal a hundred and eighty dollar bill, a hundred and fifty dollar bill, it would add about between fifteen to twenty dollars onto their bill per month. So if we look at these, anything that is sub one penny is going to be less than that on that, but if, you know, as that is a sliding scale, that's gonna increase their bill. But that's what we're really shooting for is for this to not be terribly impactful. But I would always remind everyone that everyone always thinks their bill is high and that as we get into the summer months, we're going to see additional energy charges and there will be the regular PCA that will be calculated on a bill up. So just for example, this month it was one point two two cents. So this would be in addition to that a regular PCA that, you know, is always plus or minus a penny.
And then as soon as we recover what we spent on this vortex, it will drop?
Yes, sir.
So it could be whether eight months or the last, or the twelve or less, or?
Absolutely, and, and we'll be recalculating that and seeing as we get there, if we have a really high usage summer, we could see that be recovered more quickly and we'd be able to, you know, at that last payment be a true up, you know, it'd be, let's just pretend, let's say it's a half of what it, whatever you pick. So we would be staying on top of that and making sure that we're not collecting more than we need.
And if my memory serves me.
That's what I was gonna add here.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Sorry to interrupt, um, that's what I was gonna add, that what you just mentioned there, that this was based on usage recently. If usage is more, you're gonna collect it faster and it'll be over with faster. If it's less, it'll just take longer to collect.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to, if my memory serves me, I believe Mr. Hart and supported by Alderman Davidson said that it would be in the city's best interest to collect this within this fiscal year.
That has been their recommendations, yes, ma'am.
Correct.
This was an estimated bill, has there been any true up at all on this?
So we received the bill that, actually last week, it came in normal. So, I mean, I, there was obviously a little bit of additional energy cost associated with that because we did see a positive power cost adjustment of a penny, but it was six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so it was about, it was slightly less than what we would consider average, but right in that range.
Could we ask Craig to tell us maybe what he's seeing with other clients that have suffered increases through the cold snap?
Yes, for the most part, everybody's collecting. I, and collecting a hundred percent of it for the most part. I work with many co-ops and many munis in this state in Arkansas that were affected by the SPP market issues. And, and they're trying to collect it over time. I have one muni that's collecting it over three years, some are collecting it quicker than others. There's folks, you know, in the MPUA deal with, some folks taking advantage of basically a line of credit with MPUA or working with them to expand that timeframe. So everybody's collecting it, they're, everybody's doing it a little differently, but they are trying to collect their money. It's quite a hit to take on the books and your cash and stuff, not to collect any of it, obviously. And so that's what, what folks are doing.
Can you give us any update on the status of class action suits or anything that the feds are doing as far as investigating this?
Not, I don't have anything new to update, that's still in process. Obviously, there, a lot of that's, that's coming down from the Texas region and such and things, but I, I have nothing really to add to it. I, it's, it's still early in the process.
Understand, thank you. Other questions from the board members?
I guess my only question left is the determination of how much we want to invest or spend on our, because we'll need to select one of these four options tonight. Absolutely.
On a monthly basis, so you sell your home or you're a renter?
On a monthly basis.
It's still a percentage of the monthly bill?
Yes, sir.
So even though, yeah, okay, so we're not looking at it as the, that you are a person that incurred this is, okay.
No, realistically, when we looked at those options, that was just not possible from a customer service perspective. We couldn't put that large amount on a customer's bill and then let it ride without creating a, just a mess from a customer service side. You know, we'd have to forego shut offs and then there are still gonna be people that are gonna leave, and now they've left you with even larger debt. So realistically, when you look at this over the course of a year, most people's usage averages out pretty even. And so what we're really doing is just averaging this and anom- you know, anonymizing it over the course of everyone's usage. And that way, realistically, most people are gonna average out and pay about what they would have paid.
Back to Marcy's question, what's the impact on the electric department between the two?
Yeah, that's what I wanna know, too.
Two fifty and, but is it a fact that we would lose a couple line items in the electric department? Has that been looked at more?
Good evening, Mr. Pollard.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Board of Aldermen. I apologize for being late, I was running late getting back from an appointment. What would it affect? It would affect, I have two capital improvement projects, one being mapping and the other one being the underground project. The underground project's gonna run about ten years. If we push that out a year, it's not gonna hurt anything. We haven't had mapping prior to this year, so it's not gonna hurt anything to push it out another year. We had already pushed it to the third quarter, fourth quarter timeframe anyway. All that paperwork is ready to go, should we decide to go in either direction. Either project could be pushed to next year and it not affect the overall workings of the electric department as you see them today, or in the future for that matter. It's just gonna slow some processes down, which is the mapping and, and the underground project. It's not really gonna affect our daily operations at all. You're, you're not gonna see any, anything that would affect you. These were just perk items that we were trying to eliminate some of the overhead in town and trying to get a better inventory of what we had on the poles. Other than that, either one, the two fifty, we could eliminate the underground portion for the five hundred, we could eliminate both, and we'd still operate and still be the same effective electric department we've been since July.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Zerring.
Just real quick, I wanted to verify, cause from our discussion on that, I know when we initially discussed it, we were discussing the possibility that it could be when we initially discussed it, we were discussing the possibility that it could be, all of it could have been covered, right? By pushing out these two?
No.
No.
Only half.
Only half?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those, those two were only gonna recoup approximately half of what we actually had to spend. That's why you have the two fifty and the five hundred thousand in there, is that we can offset these two capital projects and not hurt the electric department's operating budget.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. Thank you.
Speaking about the electric department, do we have any idea what the cost of the new substation is going to be that recently was fried?
Oh, you're talking about the circuit that we had interrupted.
Sorry, I misspoke on the substation, but that, to replace that circuit.
I am working with the city of Higginsville currently on a mutual aid project. As you know, we've, we've done mutual aid for other cities, Louisiana, Hannibal, different things. The city of Higginsville has agreed to come in and do the boring for us. That'll be at a way reduced cost than what we had expected. We had expected this to cost somewhere in a twenty-five to fifty thousand dollar range. I'm thinking, I ordered the materials the other day and I sent that to Brad, the copy of the, what I ended up purchasing, I purchased for eleven thousand dollars for the materials. I'm gonna have to purchase some conduit because we weren't able to get the, the wire out of the conduit. I'm guessing twenty, twenty-five thousand tops.
Good.
We were talking about fifty in the beginning and that was just for materials and that was just in case the wire come out. We now are looking at twenty-five on the high, high end. I should have a good number here in the next few weeks because the city of Higginsville's sending two operators to let me know the approximate amount of time.
Well, it sounds like maybe I should send some Kansas City barbecue to the city of Higginsville.
We may have to do so, yes ma'am, and a plaque. But yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what do you want to do here? You've got four options. We should talk about which one we want to entertain.
Well, obviously if we stay within eight month, make Mr. Hart really happy, make it a little easier. But if we did the shorter timeframe, I would suggest we go ahead and pay half of it out of reserves. I mean, it's, it's not our money anyway, it's the taxpayers' money. And I mean, we do have a good reserve, but we can't just spend it all, cause then what if something happens again?
That's true.
Then, you know, so we still keep some in there and, but paying half, that'll really help them out and, and during the eighth month rather than the twelve. I mean, make them a little harder, but it still won't be excessive.
Okay, would you state your motion then?
What amount? May I ask a question before he does? Which amount, Matt, were you talking, the five hundred?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes. I, I make a motion that we approve the eight month recovery using five hundred thousand in cash reserves for the polar vortex event. Second.
Yeah. I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff, that we utilize the eight month recovery plan using five hundred thousand of the city's cash reserves. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill Thirty-four is approved and becomes Resolution Zero Two Zero. Alderman in committee reports. Alderman Davidson?
I don't believe I have anything, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Mills?
Oh, however we got the railroad tracks fixed, I'd really appreciate that on Highway Two. That was wonderful and I hear we're having good conversation on, with MoDOT on the whole intersection, cause those, we have a tremendous amount of semi trucks there and they tear up that, that whole operation.
They sure do.
And then, I know it's probably too early, but I mean, and I haven't been around to hear the, I guess gossip, but any impact on the city yet, knowing that the property changes at Glen Eagle and the, the land down at Sutherland's and you may not be able to say? And then, and then I also understand in the industri, I'll call it the industrial park, but what was the brickyard, Dale Atkinson, the last I know, owned the transfer station out there, changed hands and is there any jobs potential there? Is, is, that, that also changed. But anyway, you, in emails or whatever you can do later, that'd be just wonderful. And then.
Since you brought it up.
And then, down there, I, down there by Sap Brothers, there was an, I didn't think it was us on the sewer thing right away, there's a guy surveying. So MoDOT is trying to come up with a solution for the lake traffic, we're stacking on forty-nine and, you know, maybe you've got some knowledge on what's going on there? And let's see, oh, and then.
You're just covering, you're just covering his entire report.
Have you read my report?
No, I have not. And then I wanted to thank, is Chris still here, Arthur? I don't know. He's gone, the chief says he's gone. Anyway, the food pantry was asked what, what was on their wish list and anyway, so I'm, I'm.
A covering.
With the Rotary Club, we're gonna cover that so they can unload those trucks in the rain and Chris went down there and met with the committee. Great ideas, good suggestions, keep it under code and gonna get that thing moving forward so that we can unload the harvester trucks in the, in the rain. So I think that's close to the end. Thank you.
Alderman Turner?
Uh, just, people's glad that, that all these buildings up and it's progressing, they can't wait for that. And then also with the announcement of Culvers, they decided to finally have another place to try, so that's about it.
Okay. Alderman Milner?
I've got nothing. Mr. Mills has way too much information this week. I'm gonna save mine.
Alderman Zaring?
Same here, Madam Mayor, I have nothing more to add.
Alderman Franklin?
Uh, we had our park board meeting this past week and our number one priority is the pool and I believe that when everyone sees everything that's going to be installed in the pool and how nice and accommodating it's going to be, I think everyone is gonna be very pleased. I know it's probably not gonna be in the timeframe that everybody would like, but we need to keep in mind the safety issues involved in that as well. We had our dog park meeting this last Thursday, last Thursday. We are in the process of getting bids for shelter and awnings of some sort to put out into the dog park. We would like to be able to have people congregate, preferably in the center. Grant and I went out last Friday and looked at some areas that were a little bit flatter and might be accommodating for a platform and get a gazebo out there. We're also thinking about taking the gazebo from the upper lake and putting that into the smaller dog park area if possible, so lots of changes going on there. And I wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday, the Love the Harrisonville Square is going to have an historic tour. We are going to have our very own David Atkinson doing the tour. It's ten dollars per person, it's from ten AM until eleven AM. And the donations, you get some coffee and we'll be going to the Cass County Historical Society. And then one last thing is on May eighth, we've got our first Junk in the Trunk. We're actually going to have, they're gonna have music from, with J.R. Brown from four thirty to six thirty and we are going to have a food truck up there and offering pulled pork sandwiches, so. And Junk in the Trunk is from four to seven PM, so make it.
Thank you, Alderwoman Franklin. Alderwoman Reese?
One thing about sitting at this end and starting at that end is that we don't have a lot to say when you get around. But I will say this, I think they've changed the weather report a little, but if it's, if it stays the same, get out your earmuffs and get out your gloves, cause they're gonna get us again, guys. Good luck.
Yeah, you just stole my thunder. Cover your, cover your flowers up tonight, cause the snow's coming tomorrow. That's all I've got, Madam Minister.
All right, report from the city administrator, here's your answers, Alderman Mills.
Okay, so first off, for upcoming meetings, if you've seen your weekly report, the Harrisonville Alliance meeting is this Wednesday night at six o'clock at the community center. The citywide cleanup, spring cleanup, May seventh and eighth. Hazardous household waste event, May twenty-second. Brush drop off is scheduled for Friday, April the third and May the first and both days will be eight to, eight AM to four PM, city residents only. And then the spring bi-annual prescription drug takeback is on April the twenty-fourth from ten AM to two PM, both at the CVS Pharmacy as well as the Harrisonville Police Department. The Lawrence Smith Memorial Airport, we've had some additional windstalk base attachments and done there, city replaced the rotating beacon bulbs. MoDOT is surveying the area around the airport property for an upcoming intersection improvements for their project at Highway Seven and I forty-nine. So that's what you're seeing with that, out in that area, is MoDOT looking to do those improvements. So we're, we're glad about that. The street department has poured about ninety feet, a five-foot sidewalk on South King, a stormwater sidewalk project to provide pedestrians and storm sewer access for Ann Street to nine hundred Oakland, or Oakwood, excuse me. And work to be completed, including the pace, the placement of three catch basins, curb and gutter along ninety feet of, of sidewalk. Asphalt repairs performed on Butler Drive, wall and Pearl Street and preparation for the asphalt overlay scheduled that'll start in May. Other street maintenance's work is consisted of sawing asphalt on Elm Street, Thunderbird Drive for the asphalt base repair and graveling areas of the sewer plant drive for the future chip seal and pothole patching. K and J Remodeling is doing the twenty-twenty planned curb and gutter sidewalk projects. As you remember, there was a lot of punchless projects that didn't get completed last year because of COVID and so we're seeing a lot of the twenty-twenty projects being done now and then we followed up with the twenty-twenty-one approved projects. Pathfinder installed two digester blowers, one digester blower down at the plant and there's another one scheduled for the, that was scheduled on April the twelfth. JCI Industries is working on number one lift station as well as pulling up a pump that was clogged and unclogging it. Just a reminder, there is no such thing as disposable wipes. Do not put your wipes in the toilet. Daniel will send out another, send you a, another little funny toilet man talking to you on social media, telling you not to do that. Then if you've seen the weekly report, one of the things we wanted to do is look at, you know, where we're at for street maintenance and, and the funds for that. And so MoDOT is, has a, a, a metric system in which they use on lane miles. There's a hundred and thirty lane miles in Harrisonville that we have to maintain. If you take that hundred and thirty lane miles times the twelve thousand five hundred it costs to maintain that lane mile, then the city of Harrisonville needs two point six million dollars to invest in our streets annually, every year. We're investing five hundred thousand with the curb, gutter, sidewalks and the streets. So we are woefully underfunded on maintaining our streets. So we'll be talking about that more during budget time and maybe some other avenues and sources, especially now that Sap Brothers is annexed in and there'll be some other opportunities that we could go for funding there. Another good thing, USGS, as you all remember, had put down the Muddy Creek, the early warning system for flooding. One of the disappointments to staff and I know the mayor was really disappointed about is the presentation that you all received was there would be some kind of easy access where the citizens would get some kind of notification if the creek was rising, some of you that were here for that. And when we got to the point when that was happening, it is a whole scientific thing that a person would have to get on and be able to put their certain parameters in there and all this kind of stuff and Daniel's probably spent hours figuring that thing out for that system. So we, we voiced our extreme displeasure that this wasn't what the mayor and the Aldermen represented and so they have found additional thirty-five thousand that they have added to the contract from USGS and they will now bring that notification system to us. So we're hoping here in the next few months, we'll have that availability and we can let you all know of that availability as well, especially people down in the south end of town that are mostly affected by that as well. And then MoDOT TEAP projects through transportation on Matt and Megan Streets and Locust and Commercial Streets, this is federal monies that through the TEAP program, Carl and, and Ted are heavily involved with those projects and as well as those funds. And then the Lake Harrisonville spillway pipe rehabilitation project, they are determining if the ground penetrating radar will work in detecting, detecting beneath that spillway. And it's my, our understanding, it's gonna be more difficult than we thought because of all the steel in that area. And so the steel pipe material that blocks the electronics, it's effectively giving information only on the lining, so engineering is pursuing more information on the borehole scanner device. And so if you really wanna know and have Carl put you to sleep, he can give you more detailed information on what that all means, which in my layman's terms means it's not working the way they thought it would work to be able to find that out and so we're having to get more fancy to get out what we actually need through there. The UV disinfection system project is moving forward. We have a project schedule and price, which is under budget, so that's always a good thing. And so there was a notice to proceed and May seventh will be that kickoff and completion date for that project will be January the sixth of twenty twenty-two. So that's moving forward. Then Carl went to the Cass County Commissioners Meeting last week. They tabled the right-of-way agreement that we had approved, that they had sent us, because they want Carl to physically talk to every single county resident before they approve the contract. So Carl has to get every phone number of every county resident and give them updates on what's going on and, and how that'll go. So we know we sent letters out, but they, the commissioners would like us to physically talk to them in person or on the phone and so. Seriously? Yeah. So Carl did get, they did give the assessor a green light to give Carl phone numbers and so he got that, so that's moving forward as fast as city staff can to try to make those calls and, and make those in-person connections so that we can get that moving forward quicker. And the long-awaited alignment study is, is coming in for reviews this week?
This week.
This week. So that'll be good as well, because as you know, we need that alignment study because the first thing a person will say to you is, why didn't you put it on that side of the street instead of my side of the street? So that gives us more scientific data to give anyone that talks to us about it. And then again, we'll pave, we'll be starting those overlay, asphalt overlay projects. And then again, we'll pave, we'll be starting those, uh, overlay, asphalt overlay projects, uh, in May. Uh, the police department received their two new, uh, cruisers, uh, that came in, uh, April the 7th. Animal Control Shelter held a drive-through, uh, vaccination clinic at North Park in the, uh, rodeo arena, uh, on the 10th, and approximately 150 people were served and approximately 400 pets were vaccinated. And so, uh, 150 in donations were received for the upcoming turf project as well. Uh, we're, we're live with the N-CO-10, and Jeremy and the utility staff are just thrilled and, um, and working through that. Uh, also, we, uh, received our, um, insurance for employees. The employee, uh, insurance came in at 10.9% higher than last year's budget, uh, so it's within budget range, uh, for the insurance without any additional cost for the employees, and so we'll be able to keep all of those same, um, plans in place for the employees. Uh, Aldis is moving along for Harrisonville. School projects are moving along. Uh, the Walmart distribution center is, uh, 70% complete, uh, on their remodel, and Walmart stores received their partial approval for final inspections. Uh, we've had seven new single-family housing permits applied for this, so far this year, and already three additional ones that have come in. Um, we've had 13 of the 25 permits that you all approved, uh, that have been issued. Last time you all did the 25 permits, it took five years, uh, to get those permits, and we're already over halfway, uh, in not even a full year yet. Uh, Glenn Eagle?
Okay, Bill.
We've got the, uh, Kevin Hickden with, uh, that had bought the 61 lots, Kevin hitting this, uh, construction, 61 lots. He is coming in to meet with staff this Thursday. He plans to pull about 20 permits, uh, new house permits, uh, for that subdivision. Um, K&amp;H Construction, uh, purchased, uh, the additional, uh, acreage. They haven't finalized their plans, but they're coming in to talk to staff as well, uh, for the plans in that area too. So basically, two, uh, different, uh, builders had bought, uh, those sec-, all the sections of land. Uh, I can tell you, as I was there for the auction, we had, uh, that community room full, uh, builders that were, uh, bidding, as well as those that were online. Some of the local builders, uh, talked to me, were shocked how many we had. Uh, that's why you're smiling, probably because they were telling you, uh, how many people were, uh, bidding, but, uh, they also made comment of the letter that the mayor and I sent out to builders. If you all remember, last year, we sent out about 350 letters to builders, telling them that Harrisonville's a wonderful place, uh, to build a new home. And so there was a lot of comments, uh, based on that. Did I hit all yours?
Sure, close enough.
And, uh, so that, uh, the construction that was, the other, the one that had the 91 acres, uh, works with Regency Homes.
You know who bought the 17 acres by Salo?
By where?
Salo.
No, we don't know that yet.
It hasn't sold something.
We've heard rumor of who it was.
That's okay.
But we didn't want it, we, until we know for sure.
I agree.
We didn't want to speculate.
Thank you, sir. You have the, uh, March 2021 municipal court report in your packet. Questions from the media? Nothing? Okay. All right, um, I have nothing tonight except to let you know that we do have another town hall meeting coming up May the 8th. Um, that will be Superintendent Paul Menching, plus a guest teacher and a guest student. Um, that will be Saturday, May the 8th, at the Harrisonville United Methodist Church again at 9:00 a.m. Um, they're going to come and talk about the past school year and what they learned through the pandemic, and what they're going to do different going forward. So we look forward to that. Um, I want to congratulate Mr. Ratliff, who gained another son over the weekend by marrying off one of his daughters, so congratulations to you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Board, I'm going to ask you if you would mind, uh, just staying in your seats. We have some members of the park board who came tonight specifically to hear the presentation about the lakes, and they weren't aware that the discussion was going to be after our board meetings, so they've been very patiently sitting out there, paying attention to everything that we've transacted in the way of city business tonight. So if we could stay here and move right into the work session, and then we'll take a break between work session and executive session. Are you all okay with that? Then I would entertain a motion to, um, leave this meeting and go on.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second? I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Franklin to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. All right, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll just kind of reshuffle and get into the work session.
And I think from now on, the city administrator needs to give his report first.
Before we'll talk?
Yes.
Or maybe you just send him a special email, how about that?
Yeah. He did say, go ahead. You can do it by email.
I don't know how they divide it up. They're locked. But those lots, they gotta have 20,000 plus in each lot.
First of all, I hate the lots. Maybe we could build a house with a better roof.
Yeah. Maybe, there you go.
But, yeah.
But that means lots.
Yeah, I know that. I think they got a good price. Yeah. But then again, but to put everything in, in today's world, sooner water, streets, maybe not.
Thank you.
We just started on you.
Interesting.
Thank you.
It's going to be years, really.
It's crazy.
Hey, thank you.
Just read the story.
Right, right, right. Oh, yeah.
Hello, thank you.
I agree.
Thank you for waiting patiently out there.
We had two.
I might start calling them a little more regularly.
Yeah, I doubt if they'll get below 20.
And he lies about it, but he said he had some.
I mean, I think they know what they're getting for those.
But you're really the only one.
So if he had to learn anything.
You filter through it so we can know it's personal.
And I'll tell you, we, we roll, we have some of the things that he discovered about our language that are hysterical. He's trying to, he's, he's telling me.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to call this, uh, work session to order. Could I roll call, please?
Alderman Davidson?
Here.
Alderman Mills?
Here.
Alderman Turner? Alderman Franklin?
Here.
Alderman Milner?
Here.
Alderman Zaring?
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Present.
Alderman Reese?
Present.
Mayor Bowman?
Present, thank you. And for the record, we have, um, park board member David Atkinson and park board member Laura Fries and the audience with us, and they've been given a packet of the, uh, presentations. So thank you guys for being here, and apologize for the delay. All right, um, who's leading this discussion? Who's introducing the presenter? Is that you, Mr. Martin? Hello?
Tonight, we have representatives from Wilson and Company to give an update on where they're at in the design of the city park lakes, uh, spillway repair. As you all know, and I go by there every time I'm here, it ain't getting any better. I'm thankful that we have y'all that supported doing this now, because there's not much life left in those things. So, um, it's a good thing that we're doing this, and, um, I am, as, as your engineer, appreciative that you had the courage and strength to move forward on it. So, um, uh, tonight, uh, Justin Klaut with, with Wilson, are you going to be leading the presentation? To talk about where they're at, I apologize, they put together a PowerPoint, but it wasn't scanned for viruses prior to this, so we don't want to do anything that would put more strain on Jeremy. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Justin to give an update on what, what's been done and where we're going.
So, good evening, everyone. Um, thanks for having us. Sorry about the, the virus scan. I, uh, should have sent that earlier, but anyway, we can work off of the, of the handouts like, like old days. Um, so we're going to talk a little bit about the, um, the, the two lakes in the city park, um, that we're going to rehab. Um, on the second page of your handout is the agenda. We'll talk a little bit about the, the project in general, um, proposed improvements to both City Lake and Lake Luna, uh, other impacts, uh, with doing this project, some considerations that we, you know, we need to think about while we're designing it and, and also during construction. Um, talk a little bit about the cost estimate and, and, uh, our anticipated schedule to get this thing complete. If anybody has any questions, feel free, stop me, um, let me know, so. Um, as far as the project overview goes, a little bit of history. Wilson and Company actually completed a study on, on this watershed in these two lakes back in 2009, and in 2009, they were in poor condition. So, um, luckily, we're, we're moving forward now, and this is, uh, this is going to be a, a good job. Um, so the first thing we did was, was a H&amp;H study, right? We, we calculated all the flows, um, the hydrology of the watersheds, and what you have here on this map is kind of the layout of, of City Lake and Lake Luna, and then also a, a proposed future detention basin that was also in that original study. Um, you know, a lot of what we done, we've done so far is to confirm the design criteria. You know, we've worked with Ted, uh, to figure out what's the best approach, uh, to designing these lakes, and then, you know, developing a model of the watershed, uh, so that we can calculate the flows that's coming to each one of these basins. And if you look on this map, um, over in the legend, it, it has the drainage area for Basins 1, Basin 2, and Basin 3, and you'll notice that Basin 3, which is the area to the north, um, there's actually 633 acres that flow into that portion of Lake Luna, so the majority of the watershed is actually coming from the north. Um, you have about 477 acres that comes through City Lake, and then Lake Luna's the, the smallest, but it, it gets the flows from everything. When we, when we, after we calculate the hydrology and we know what those flows are, then we develop a model of the spillways, and the spillways work in conjunction with one another, right? So, so City Lake holds back water, and then it flows into Lake Luna, and then it holds back water, and it goes on. So after we worked through the different flows and, and, um, calculated, uh, everything based on the design criteria, we came up with some proposed improvements. And this is going to be, you know, a multi-phase project. So the first phase that we came up with, as you know, the spillways are bad. Um, right now, both lakes have a, have a primary and auxiliary spillway that are kind of combined into one. So once it starts flowing over the concrete structure, it doesn't, doesn't stop until the water drops enough, um, that it won't flow out that structure anymore. So the proposed improvements, after running through all the models, uh, is to raise the dam of both lakes four feet. We're not doing all that right now, but both dams needed to be raised four feet. That provides additional storage capacity. Then we also want to replace the primary spillway, um, with a more traditional stand pipe type spillway. So you have a concrete structure out in the lake, the water goes in there, um, water builds up in, in depth as it goes out, and then once it gets over like a hundred-year event, so higher intensity events, it'll run out an emergency spillway. So we want to replace that primary spillway, we want to replace the emergency spillway, and separate those structures, so it's not, not just all flowing out that concrete structure like it is now. Um, we would leave the normal pool, the same elevation in both lakes, so raise the dam provides more storage, but we're not going to increase the water level on a, on a normal basis. Um, and then because I mentioned, a lot of that flow comes from the north, um, to make everything work together, uh, we proposed a, another detention basin to the north in the future. So that would be, uh, future phases. So for this phase, um, right now, we're going to, we're going to propose raising City Lake Dam four feet, replacing both the principal spillway and the emergency spillway on City Lake. And then for Lake Luna, uh, we propose just replacing the spillways. So those are our, uh, improvements right now. On the next, the next page here where it talks about City Lake, there's a picture of the, that concrete structure, concrete spillway. Um, if you remember, you know, Ted mentioned it's not getting any better. On March 18th, we had a, maybe the 17th, we had a rain event, so on the 18th, the plunge pool in this photo was completely full of water, and it was, a little bit was running over the, over the road there, um, a lot of it was running underneath. None of that water was flowing over the top of the concrete. So it was going somewhere else, right? So there's a big void, and you can see kind of how the water's seeping out around this concrete structure, so there are voids. Um, we came down and visited that, uh, the dam that day. Charles made a trip down here along with Terricon, who's our geotechnical engineer that day. Um, and they looked at it and made some recommendations, saying we need to lower the lake level, um, try to get that flow, uh, stopped from running around the concrete structure, and Public Works did a good job of stopping that flow, finding the drain valve, opening it up, like, is it still running? So it's, it's still running, so it's been running since March 18th, and probably noticed the lake hasn't gone down a whole lot. So it takes a long time to drain millions of gallons of water. So, anyway, um, our recommendation's still to keep that, keep the lake down low, because we have more, more rain coming, so, um, but anyway. So the proposed improvements, uh, I mentioned, are raise the dam. Um, in order to raise the dam, we got to find soil to do that, so I'll talk a little bit about the borrow area and then replacing the spillway structure, uh, principal spillway and auxiliary spillway, so. Um, on your next sheet, there, uh, it's basically just City Lake survey, so this shows you, you know, how we, we went out, sent our, uh, field surveyors out there, and they gathered data, so this is the actual survey that we gathered of the site, so that we can do our detailed design and, uh, develop construction documents based on this. Uh, it's just for reference, thus, so that's all the existing conditions of the site out there. Um, the next sheet, uh, we have a, uh, basically a cross-section of the dam that shows, uh, what we're proposing. So you can see if you, if we leave, uh, normal pool elevation at 931, we're going to raise the top of the dam four feet. If we raise the top of the dam four feet, then that means the dam has to get wider, right, because of the slopes and, and the embankment that we're going to place there. Um, we'll leave a 15-foot crest on top of the dam, and then three-to-one slopes, which will be maintainable, so that it can be mowed, um, not going to have to weed eat it, but actually use, um, zero-turn mower to, to mow that embankment. There's, uh, raising the dam four feet is going to cause about, at the most, about 10 feet of fill on the backside of that dam. So as we do that, it's also going to impact the road that's down below the dam, so we're going to have to move the road out, um, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, but also some utilities and other considerations with that. So to get... So, to get the soil, I've been in contact with Mr. John Coffey, who purchased the property to the north of the City Lake recently. Robert Edwards was nice enough to provide excavation equipment for us. And we went out on the area where I show in the photo, the earthen borrow site. And we dug lots of holes to about eight or 10 feet deep to make sure that there's no rock, how much topsoil's out there. And if we have good clay soil, the most important thing for a dam is to have clay soil that can be highly compacted and is not permeable. Luckily, all of it was. So, we have nice fat clay soil up there that we can use for a borrow area. As long as Mr. Coffey is agreeable to that. So, currently, we're working on an agreement that we can take to him and negotiate using this soil. Most of the good soil was on top of the ridge. So, if you think about standing on the dam, you look to the north, it kind of goes up. So, it was a quarter mile up the hill, probably. So, that was the best soil that we found up there. Once we got closer to the lake, we got into more of a sandstone-type material. It still had clay in it, but it was sandstone. We may be able to use, like, I don't know, more than one type of soil. We can use it in different zones, right? So, we can use the clay more inside. We can strip off the topsoil up there. We can save it and put it back for him so that he can grow grass, and then we can have what we need. But anyway, we're working on that. We will actually survey that area and do a grading plan so that we know how much soil we need to borrow from him and kind of what those impacts would look like. So, we're in the process of doing that right now. Next sheet is a grading plan that we're working on. And these are existing contours and proposed contours. Gets a little, I don't know, confusing, makes you cross-eyed to look at it because there are so many lines on here. But the shaded areas, we tried to show the wider shaded area is going to be the road, obviously, to relocate it. And then, the darker, thinner shaded area is the top of the dam. So, that's that 15-feet top of dam. There's a couple considerations here and options we've looked at. And, you know, after we surveyed the area, we ran our calculations, and we know how much flow we have and what size of structures we're looking at. We got our survey. We actually met with Ted here, I don't know, maybe a couple of weeks ago, and had like a working session with him. Because, you know, we can do two options. We can take the emergency spillway. And you've usually seen them on a lot of lakes, there's the flat area, right, that runs around the side of the dam because we don't really want that higher-intensity flows running over the dam. So, we want it to run around the dam so that we can control it. So, we could go around the north side of the dam, or we could go around the south side of the dam. Obviously, if we go around the south side of the dam, there's still going to be some impacts to, there's sanitary sewer over there, and there's roads. So, but if we go around the north side of the dam, we're on private property. So, anyway, we worked with Ted, determined that the best way to get that emergency spillway around the end of the dam would be on the south side so that we're not getting out onto the private property. So, to make it a little bit easier to look at, on the next sheet, we just turned off all the contours so that you have less lines. Tried to add some color to it so that it stands out a little bit better. The pink line is the top of dam. In order to raise it four feet, we have to wrap it farther around the side of the lake because it's pretty flat on each side of the dam. We want to make sure that we get that same four-foot elevation. And that's, and the limits of the pink line are about how far we have to go to hit that contour for the four-foot raise. The purple or purplish-blue line is proposed roadway relocation through this area. We will be impacting a couple of items here, and we can talk about them later. But basically, the parking for the shelter on the north side of the dam and the skate park. One thing that Grant wanted to make sure was that we didn't impact the dog park. But we're trying to minimize the impacts to everything else as much as possible. So, with that, Lake Luna is the next one. There's a couple of pictures here. That concrete structure isn't in very good shape either. Once they started letting more water out of City Lake and Lake Luna filled up, you can kind of see the water that sprays up. Bubbles up out of the concrete, right? And the more pressure you get on it, the higher it goes. So, our recommended improvements here are to replace auxiliary spillway and the principal spillway. So, next sheet, same thing. This is the survey that we have of the area that we start with for our existing conditions. Similar to City Lake. The next sheet, no contours on here, so these are just some ideas that we're going through. Where do we put our principal spillway? How do we phase this construction? And where do we put our emergency spillway? So, what we're looking at right now is putting our concrete standpipe or principal spillway in the channel on the backside of the existing structure. So, potentially building the spillway without lowering the lake. So, if we're going to build something out in the lake, we have to build a cofferdam where we drive piles into the water, and we pump the water out. And then, we can do the construction inside of there. We can remove them and let it flood back. If there's, so what we're looking at right now is actually building this structure in the channel downstream. And then, we'll backfill around it and remove the concrete structure all at the same time. And then, we'll basically move the dam back. Another advantage of doing this is, right now, there's no trail access, really, across this dam. When we've been out there, we've seen several people that walk from the houses or the Boy Scout area, and they walk all the way around the dam. And they get to that concrete spillway, and they think about walking across it, but they don't. They always stop and turn around and go back. So, if we fill this in and we actually build a top of dam that we can build a sidewalk across, then we can provide connection to the other side of the lake as well. On this alternative, this shows 150-foot emergency spillway that would be like a side spillway. So, it would roll over the side of the dam. So, if we do that, we have to take extra precautions to protect the erosion that could happen on that side of the dam. So, that's one option. The other option on the next sheet is actually to rebuild the dam in a similar configuration as on the previous example, but put that emergency spillway kind of around the east side of the dam now. So, if we were to put the emergency spillway over there, we'd have to realign the road and that parking area right there because we'd get into it. So, anyway, those are the two options that we're looking at right now for this one. I've talked about other impacts. City Lake, you know, there's going to be impacts to the roads and parking, trails and sidewalks. There's a picture, the left picture is standing up on top of the dam, looking at the pedestrian bridge. And that's about where we want the new road to go. So, that pedestrian bridge would be removed, but we would extend the outlet structure of the spillway far enough that it'd basically just be roadway embankment so we could build a sidewalk or a trail across it. We wouldn't have to have a bridge anymore. In that same picture, on the right side of the channel, you can see the power pole that has about 20 guy wires. So, we're going to miss that, but there may be some fill up against it, or we'll have to work through some of those situations. But the plan is to put the road on the backside of that power pole. Can we bury? The guy wires? No, you were talking about... The line would get significantly larger. I've got confidence in him that he could probably figure something out.
I was thinking of that grant money that they were talking about.
I'm thinking you better start playing the lottery.
No, there's, so one of the things we keep looking at as staff is not just the money we know we're getting, but these other agencies that are getting money. Because, once they get money through the state agencies, they're going to offer grants. And so, there's even a link I sent him today for some additional grants that are coming out. And so, if there's a chance that we could do that, and a grant would hit just right when we are out there doing it. I mean, I don't mind doing a hail mary. And then, if there's some available grant for that. I'm just, if we're out there moving dirt, it's got to be cheaper now than it will be later. Find them grants.
We believe in you, man. So, when we locate our road, we will coordinate with Andy. No, anything's possible. Anything's possible. So, right now, we're looking at putting our road, relocating the road to the other side of the power poles. Leaving the power poles in place, but we'll work with him and coordinate all that. There's other utilities that we're going to have to coordinate with. There's sanitary sewer, some water lines. You know, I've talked to Grant, and he'd like to extend some water services with this project over the shelters. So, that's something that we'll be doing as well with the project. And then, the skate park, I think we're going to have to move the road over far enough that it's probably going to hit the skate park. So, that's something else that we're going to need to work through. As far as Lake Luna goes, again, it's the same thing. You have roads and parking areas that we'll need to consider. Some of the options will require, obviously, less roadway reconstruction than other options. So, you know, we're trying to come up with ideas and designs that will minimize that reconstruction as much as possible. So, we got to stay within Ted's budget, so we're looking at ways to do that. Trails and sidewalks, if we can provide something that's an added benefit to the park, then we'll go ahead and do that as long as it's not too much or too out of the ordinary. And then, utilities, with Lake Luna, I know there's a sanitary sewer line under the street right there. And maybe some power, too, that we're going to have to. Other considerations, the next sheet here is construction traffic. Obviously, I mentioned that there's a, the borrow site is going to be up north of City Lake. So, how's that construction traffic going to interact with the users of the park? We need to make sure that we have everything signed. The contractor knows exactly where they need to stay, how they're going to construct it, what their phasing is going to be. How we're going to maintain access to the golf course during this because there's going to be really large dump trucks bringing dirt over back and forth across that road. So, whether it's a flagger or something else, and we'll work with the contractor and make sure that they're aware so that we just keep everybody safe. Construction cost estimates, our last estimate that we put together for the alternative analysis or the H&amp;H study was just under $2 million, which I believe is, 2 million is the budget for this project. So, again, we're looking for ways to reduce impacts and minimize construction of other items outside of the dam improvements. And then, the last thing I wanted to cover is the anticipated schedule and kind of where we are right now. So, so far, we've completed our site survey. We've got borrow area geotechnical investigation has been performed. Alternative analysis, a preliminary design meeting, and we're here presenting to the board today and also the park board. Our plan is to have preliminary design and a utility meeting on May 11th. And then, from that, making sure everybody's on the same page and moving on to final design and that review towards July, and then having final construction plans in August. So, it's quite a process. There's a lot of moving parts involved, especially when it comes to utilities and geotech and making sure we have the design right, making sure that we don't impact more than we need to impact. And I think Terricon is going to be scheduled to do the actual dam borings and spillway borings in the next couple of weeks. So, you'll probably see a drill rig out there in the next few weeks doing some more work. With that, I'll open it up to questions. Oh, I'll also mention down at the bottom, we have other meetings to be determined, right? We always have coordination meetings, but other stakeholder meetings, utility coordination. We are doing a, as part of this project, Grant asked that we do a, like, a high-level master plan for the park. And so, we've actually engaged the services of Stand Tech and their landscape architects to look at the park overall. Take a holistic look at the park and see what kind of improvements could be made. Maybe some revenue-generating ideas or other things to improve connectivity, whatever it may be. So, that's something we're working through right now. We met with Grant here a few weeks ago and kind of discussed some of his ideas and things he's heard. And so, they're going to put that plan together, and then, we'll have a separate meeting with the park board and potentially the Board of Aldermen at that time to present those findings and kind of what they're thinking. So, with that, does anybody have any questions?
Alderman Davidson.
Worst-case scenario, spring rains. Where do you think we stand with that in regards to? I know this is preparing for the future, but we're here this year. So, what's your thoughts there?
It's a tough one, right? I mean, they're in bad shape, so need to lower the lake as much as possible and hope they hold on, and the fixes that you've done so far hold on for ready to spring rains that are coming up.
Are we draining the maximum amount from the lakes now that we could, or can that be turned up?
It's open all the way.
With the facilities that are out there, I don't think there's any more that can be done at this time.
Alderman Turner.
So, what's the, I mean, the whole timeframe, I mean, is real this tight before we get both dams completely done? And we don't have to worry about the dams anymore?
Six-month project? I think construction's probably six months. It would extend into the winter.
But I mean, will it be done this year?
Next spring.
Well, how much of it can be done over the winter, actually? I mean, if you're looking at your final constructions, not, plans aren't until, what, August?
So, with dirtwork, most of it, I mean, you can still do a lot of dirtwork as long as you don't have frozen clumps and you can compact it. It can still be done when it's cold. Usually, pavement is what can't be done when it's cold because asphalt plants close. Equipment still runs. And really, we have a pretty good construction season typically up until December. So, we can get quite a significant amount done.
I mean, I just curious, so we wouldn't have to worry about the dams and the shape that they're in now? That have some type of a safety net versus what we currently have? With the rain season still going, and then this fall?
Yeah, after construction's complete, so I think next spring.
Alderman Mills.
I asked Grant if he wanted to take pressure off Luna, and his comment was that the city was told you can't shut the valve once you open it. So, I opened and closed it twice. I think I did it three times and had no issue. You could call Bob Cerber and see if there's any issue with that, but if you wanted to take pressure off of Luna... But if you wanted to take pressure off of Luna, that, that drain. And then there's a leak in the pipe about halfway to the creek. So you could ask Bob, too, if they fixed that. To my knowledge, they didn't. So you can only open that valve about halfway. Otherwise, it just blows the grass out and runs across the, the lawn there. But, you know, we got to fix that later. Or we could dig the pipe up and fix it and then let it rip. But to my knowledge, you can close the valve after you open the valve. I mean, it's been 25 years since I did that, but you can lower Luna. And then, and then if you want, I really don't want to, but I can show you how to siphon the water over the dam because we did that that night. But, and that doesn't cost any electricity, but anyway. And then you, you did say at the end, you're, you're, you're boring or you're coring City Lake dam, probably both of them. Yeah, because with the addition of four feet, we've never witnessed any weeping or anything on those things over the years. So you assume there's a clay core in those things. But, yeah, that'll tell you. And then, so then would you be removing, assuming there's a clay core, you're going to go down to the clay to put the new clay to add the four? You've still got to have a clay complete barrier. Okay.
So TerraCon will provide those recommendations on, on how to strip off the existing vegetation and bench in the, the embankment and then what we need for tow drains and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay.
So we won't hold you to this, but realistically, if your construction plans are finalized in August and it takes a six-month period to do the dams, the dams should be done then early 2022. Even if the road isn't complete, you can still get the dams completed regardless of the fact that it's winter. Just the roads may not be completed because of the weather. But we could, we could realistically hope for the dams to be completed by February, March of next year.
That's correct.
And again, we won't hold you to that, but-
No, you're, you're, you're right, that, that is correct. You know, what we also have to consider is access to the golf course and if we're going to maintain that. So if, if our embankment is going to fill out over the existing road, then we got to construct a new road or access before filling all that soil in. So that'll be something we work through, but yes, you're correct.
Are there questions from the park board members? Either of the park board members?
Yeah, how long do you, do we have to advertise the project for?
21 days.
So it would be first of September, yeah, late August.
Do you see both at once or you do it one first and then the second?
That'll be up to the contractor, how he wants to phase it.
Well, there's, there's one job.
There's one job?
Oh, yeah, it's one job.
Door dam, upper dam. And then, did you say you're not raising Lake Luna dam?
Not at this time, not with this phase of the project.
But you're just building a, a new spillway down below the existing spillway, but not raising the dam?
That's correct.
So won't any dirt being transferred down to, to Lake Luna?
Only to fill in the existing channel as much as we need to.
But either way, it's going to take, take the road out, the roads will all have to be moved pretty much all the way to the park.
Um, maybe not Lake Luna. So depending on where the spill, the emergency spillway is. So if we go like on the, on the west side, kind of where the dam wraps around and we let the water flow over there and then like a side entrance into that channel, then we wouldn't have to relocate the road that's adjacent to the spillway.
You say right now, as far as Lake Luna, what, what are you referring, are you anticipating future raising of that dam? Or what are we looking at? Because you keep, you keep saying right now.
So phase one is the raising of City Lake dam and then replacing the spillways on both lakes. Phase two, in the future, sometime in the future, would be to raise Lake Luna dam four feet as well to provide more storage, plus construct the detention pond up to the north. Then, then that whole system would function to limit the 100-year runoff so that it doesn't overtop the dams.
What would you anticipate getting the, the dirt for the second phase then of, of raising Luna? Is that going to come maybe from the, the future detention pond? Or will that come from where you're getting it now?
It's hard to say. Looking at where we've proposed that future detention pond, it's kind of in a low area. Low areas are typically silty and not clay. So it would need to come from another source, whether it's on Mr. Coffey's property or somewhere else around town.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Ratliff?
I have two. Well, one, can we get this electronically so that we can put it up on the website?
Absolutely.
Because I have citizens calling me about this plan. And then I have one citizen in particular that has called me five times. Is the fish going to be saved? And I told him I was told there wasn't a fish in Luna, but there's not too many.
We are, we're going to attempt to construct these projects without lowering the lake level too much. Now, depending on how much we need to lower it between now and construction is another thing. But for right now, if we need to, we can, we can build a cofferdam so that we can have the dry area to construct our spillways, so.
And my last question is, I didn't hear you talk about, is there any drudging of Luna that's planned?
Not with this project. That would be something that, that Ted and I have planned for a future project, but we're not doing anything with, with it right now.
Other questions from the Board of Alderman or the Park Board? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Justin.
You bet.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Aye, second. I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Franklin to adjourn the work session. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm going to suggest that we meet in here for our closed section, session just because we can spread out a little bit more. So I'm going to just ask staff and anyone else in attendance to scoot on out. We'll take about a five-minute break, coffee break or potty break and-